It's four o'clock. We'll call the meeting of this November first, two thousand and twenty-two Salina Planning Commission to order. Margie, can you confirm that the Kansas Open Meeting Act has been met?
I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice was provided.
Thank you. Dean, roll call?
We'll call, roll. Commissioner Farber?
Here.
Commissioner Ivy?
Here.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Waters? Commissioner Alt?
Here.
Commissioner Olson? Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Chair Miccel?
Here.
So we have a total of five members present out of a membership of eight, and that constitutes a quorum, so we can move forward and conduct today's business.
Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from the October eighteenth meeting?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of the October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting.
In a second?
Second.
Moving in second at all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None being heard. Motion carries. New business, Dean?
I'm going to turn this item over to Mr. Hirst, which is our public hearing item today, item three point one.
Thank you, Dean and Commissioners. So this particular agenda item is for a amended final development plan for a proposed new hotel, a Hyatt Place Hotel, and it is the same location that you reviewed for a Atwell Suites in two thousand and twenty-one. So to take you back to that event in September of two thousand and twenty-one, the planning commission reviewed an application to rezone the outlot south of Central Mall that were currently, that were zoned PDD C one, and the proposition was to rezone them to PDD C three, along with the final development plan for an Atwell Suites Hotel that would have eighty rooms. Since that time, the developer, who is the applicant in this particular case, has come back to staff with a revised plan. That revised plan is for a Hyatt Place Hotel in lieu of the Atwell Suites Hotel that was previously proposed, and it, it goes from an eighty-room hotel to a hundred-room hotel that also has meeting spaces. And so on the overhead projector, we have a comparison sheet that shows the Atwell Suites and the Hyatt Place Hotel. The purpose of this particular comparison sheet is to show that the increase in, in floor area as well as increase or decrease in open space and increase of rooms and parking spaces that would be required was significant enough that staff could not approve the amended site plan, the amended final development plan, without a public hearing. And so we scheduled a public hearing to come before this board and on October eighteenth of this year. At that time, staff is still working with applicant on some revisions to the final development plan, and the planning commission voted to postpone consideration and review of the amended development plan to this date today, and so that's why we're here today. So the, the plan itself, as I said, is the vacant lot that consists of lots three, four, and five, or tracks three, four, and five of the Central Mall PDD, the vacant area just south of the former JCPenney's tenant space at the Central Mall. This particular property is entirely in the map to hundred-year floodplain with a base flood elevation of twelve thirty-nine, and what that means is that any development that takes place on the property, any new structures, the lowest floor elevation of those structures would have to be at least one foot or more above the base flood elevation. So if we have a base flood elevation of twelve thirty-nine, that means the lowest floor elevation of the proposed hotel will have to be twelve forty. And what we do is we address that through a requiring what we call a elevation certificate, which is a surveying document that a surveyor will prepare prior to going vertical after the footings in the floor have been poured and installed to confirm that the lowest floor is indeed above the, the base flood elevation. So the site itself is in the floodplain. Again, it's tracks three, four, and five of the entire development. Atwell Suites was a smaller development with eighty rooms, and at the time, the applicant chose to leave a portion of the lot undeveloped to make it available for future expansion or use, and this is what the elevation drawings look like for the Atwell Suites. By comparison, the latest plan is proposing to use the entire development, and rather than having access off of the east, or excuse me, the west access road for the Central Mall, they're proposing to have access off the east Central Mall road to hopefully alleviate some of the congestion that the planning commission was concerned about previously. So the orientation of the building is in east-west orientation with the front of the hotel facing Magnolia, even though there's no access off of Magnolia, and here's a, a rendering of what that looks like. One of the things that's really important about this project, and we talked about it with Atwell Suites, is that there is a thirty-five foot drainage ditch easement for a citywide drainage ditch that's, that has steep walls on the north side of Magnolia. Historically, the city of Salina has maintained that ditch because of the steep walls. There is specific and special equipment that is required in order to maintain that ditch, and what that involves is a tractor-style vehicle with a boom mower that hangs off the side and down into, down into the ditch, so to speak. So the tractor boom goes across the ditch like this with a boom that hangs out and down into the ditch, and that's how that ditch is mowed. And in speaking with the applicant, they are interested in the city continuing that maintenance of that ditch because it's, it would be difficult for them to maintain it privately. In talking with our public works department, they're, they require twenty-foot access easement along the north side of the ditch to make sure that they have enough room for their equipment. So what that means is the applicant will have to provide staff with an exhibit showing the dimensions and location of that, of that access easement, and they'll also have to have a revised drawing, a revised site plan drawing, that shows the north edge or the crest of the ditch in relationship to the proposed improvements with the hotel and the access easement to, so that we can confirm that we do have that twenty feet from the crest of that ditch to where the development begins for the hotel site. The hotel itself is surrounded by street frontages on all four sides. You have a private access drive on the west. You have the Central Mall Ring Road that goes around the whole Central Mall development on the north, and then you have another private access road to the east. And the Central Mall is, or the proposed hotel development is proposing to use that east access road as well as the north access road. The building design of the development, staff is a little bit unclear of what all the materials are. In looking at the drawings, it appears as though the first floor will consist primarily of a brick masonry product with the upper three floors being primarily an ephesus material with some of the lower floor as well as some of the upper floors having a horizontal-type architectural siding, and that's kind of seen in the color rendering that we have. And so one of the things that staff would ask the applicant to do is clarify exactly what the materials are that are being proposed and what the colors are. We typically do that through a material schedule, so when we get drawings for our building permit, as a point of example, we'll have the elevation drawings, and those elevation drawings will show exactly what those surface materials are as well as their, their colors. And so that's something that staff would request that the applicant provide a little clarity on. And one of the reasons that that's important is because when we have a planned development district like this, it is a requirement that the planning commission review the proposed elevations, the materials and colors and appearance of the structure, and that the planning commission find that it, it's, that they demonstrate high-quality visual appearance. Looking at off-street parking for the site, the off-street parking regulations for hotels require one parking space for every hotel room plus seventy-five percent of what would typically be required for all accessory spaces. Accessory spaces that are, are sometimes common to hotels consist of possibly having restaurants or meeting spaces or conference spaces. In this particular case, we do have a, let me get to a floor plan here. We do have a breakfast area, but that is for guests that are staying at the hotel, so that wouldn't really classify as a restaurant. However, we do have a little over eleven hundred square feet of meeting area and assembly area for conferencing. And so what that means is that this hotel, which has a hundred rooms, is going to be required to have a hundred rooms for the hotel rooms, and then another nineteen rooms for, or another nineteen off-street parking spaces for the meeting spaces. So in total, the hotel is required to have a hundred and nineteen off-street parking spaces. Currently, the site has a hundred and four off-street parking spaces being proposed, and the applicant is requesting to be allowed to use some of the surplus parking that the Central Mall has to the north. Staff is open to the idea, but there are some challenges that need to be taken care of or addressed in order for that to work. One is in, in what mechanism, what mechanism will be used in order to preserve or reserve those parking spaces for the use of the hotel so that people who are customers of the Central Mall don't inadvertently or accidentally park in them, so that they know that those are parking spaces allocated to the hotel, and how are people that are going to the hotel know that they're available for use of, of patrons of the hotel, customers of the hotel, and then how are they going to be tied to the hotel in perpetuity? So currently, the applicant is the Central Mall, the owners of the Central Mall, and at some point in time, it's not beyond the realm of imagination that they could be separate owners. So you could have a separate ownership for the hotel from the Central Mall, and how do we make sure that those parking state, those parking spaces remain for the usage and are allocated to the Central Mall? So those are some of the, the questions that staff has that need to be worked out in terms of how many parking spaces are going to be allocated to Central or to the hotel and how they would remain in the hotel's possession. Another concern is that this access road that kind of connects off of the, off of the ring road can be rather busy because a lot of the business that, that takes place at Central Mall is associated with the district and the theater and Ross Dress for Less. So this area, that's, that's to the north and to the east of the hotel, back kind of what we would call behind the Central Mall, can, can generate quite a bit of traffic. And so what staff would suggest is if there are going to be off-street parking spaces allocated to the hotel, that they be allocated from the rows of parking stalls that are on the west side of this, this access roads that patrons and customers aren't crossing that access road, and then a, a second access road, which was the ring road, just to reduce the number of, or points of conflict that you could have with pedestrians trying to get into the hotel. Staff would also note that when we look at the, the site plan and, and we measure the space that is to the east of the access road that is on the east side of the building, there does appear to be sufficient space for fifteen off-street parking spaces if the planning commission preferred having all of the off-street parking spaces on the hotel site. So there does appear to be sufficient space for that, if that is a preference of the planning commission. The site does have a dedicated loading and loading zone, which is sometimes something that gets overlooked, but they do have a ten-and-a-half-foot by twenty-five-foot loading and loading zone for hotel supplies to be brought on to the site. For landscaping, the, the property has four frontages, which requires landscaping along all four frontages. In total, the site is required to have twenty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy square feet, and the proposed plan has a little over thirty-four thousand, so they do have surplus landscaping that's being proposed in the front yard area. One of the questions that staff has been working towards, or working with the applicant on is there are a number of existing trees, which the applicant has identified, that are being retained. One of the questions that we have is which of those existing trees are ornamental trees? Which of the existing trees are shade trees? Because they have different tree counts that are allocated to them. And when we go through the plan, the, based on the amount of required front yard landscaping, the site is required to have forty-six tree units on the four frontages in the front yard areas, and currently, there are eighteen existing trees as well as in the front yard area, and that would be it. So the existing trees are the only ones that are in the front yard area, but there's also an additional nine ornamental trees and thirteen shade trees and two hundred and fourteen shrubs, and those trees are primarily around the perimeter of the parking lot or around the perimeter of, of the building. So there are additional trees. They just don't happen to be in the front yard landscaping area. So that would be something that staff would request, is that the applicant clarify of the existing trees, which ones are ornamental, which ones are shade, and then they can figure out how many existing tree units are in the front yard and figure out what they need to do to add additional trees to get to the forty-six tree unit requirement. In addition to front yard landscaping, any parking lots that have more than fifty parking stalls are required to have five percent of the parking areas dedicated to landscaping islands and peninsulas, and based on the square footage that, that staff calculated, and we're still working with the, with the applicant to tie that number down, specifically, we have a little over fifty-three thousand square feet of paving area for driving aisles and parking stalls, which comes to about twenty-seven hundred square feet of required landscaping area, and currently, there are about twenty-one hundred, so they're about six hundred square feet shy, so needing additional landscape island and peninsula area is something that we're working with the applicant on as well. Based on the linear feet of building frontage on this site, because the C three district allows four square feet per lineal foot of building frontage, the, the site is allowed to have an immense amount of signage, three thousand one hundred and twenty-eight square feet, and to be exact, which is way more than they'll ever use. The plans that have been submitted do have wall signage on all four sides. That totals out to two hundred and ninety-six square feet, so they're well underneath their limitation. One of the questions that staff has is regarding, I'll pull up the site plan, the monument sign that's being proposed at the southeast corner of the property, and typically, this would be an ideal location. Staff's concern in this case is it, it would be in the location of the proposed access easement that is needed to maintain the ditch, and so that, that sign will have to be relocated to a location where it won't interfere with access of the, of the maintenance equipment for the ditch. So that addresses everything that staff had. So there are on page, I guess if you look on page thirteen, a rundown of the correction items that staff is still working with the applicant on. Another of them that I didn't mention, but it's probably important just to, just so that you understand, is when we look at the, the property line, there are a number of lines here that you see. There's a curb line, there's a gutter line, and one of them is a property line, but it's, it's, staff is having a difficult time picking out which of the lines is actually the property line all the way across, and so having that kind of highlighted for us or bolden or having a different line configuration, like a dash and a line, dash and a line, would be helpful, and we think that would be something that the applicant can help us with pretty easily. And then the other is the access easement exhibit and site plan. The third item is the exterior materials of the building and the color. The third item is addressing the off-street parking and whether or not it's going to be onsite or if it's going to be offsite, how we will, by what means are we going to make sure that those parking spaces are allocated to the hotel in perpetuity, and how will customers know the difference between what's Central Mall parking and what's hotel parking, and how will hotel patrons know that there's additional parking to the north? Then the fifth item is additional tree units, and the sixth item is additional landscape island area and peninsula area. And so with that, staff does have a number of alternatives that we've listed, and that would be on the page, bottom of page twelve, but you could approve the proposed amended final development plan to allow the construction of the Hyatt Hotel as submitted, or number two, you could approve the amended development plans subject to certain revisions or conditions, or three, you could postpone consideration if additional information is needed and you feel that staff needs to continue to work with the applicant to address some of the, the questions that we still have. Four, you could deny the proposed amended final development plan and stating the reasons thereof. When it comes to our recommendation, it kind of depends on how significant you feel the, the remaining correction items are and how comfortable you are with the applicant working with staff to address them. If you are uncomfortable and you feel like they're significant, then staff would recommend that you postpone to a future planning commission date specifically named. The next, our next hearing date is, I had it written down, and I don't, fifteenth? November fifteenth, or if, if that is believed to be too soon, then you can, you could use the, the next date, which we can look up for you as well. But we'd have to, if we postpone, we'd have to name the specific date in which we would be postponing to. If you feel like the correction items are minor enough that staff can continue to work with the applicant to get them corrected, you know, you could turn them into conditions, which we have listed at the bottom of page fourteen and fifteen. And in addition to the six correction items that we've talked about, we've also listed a condition that a site drainage plan be submitted, reviewed, and approved by the city engineer. That's standard for all projects out in this area. The Central Mall PDD has a shared drainage detention pond already designed for the subdivision, and so what would need to be done is the applicant would have to design a drainage plan to get the water from the site to that drainage detention pond. Number eight is an elevation certificate requirement to make sure that the lowest floor is at least twelve forty or higher. Number nine would be that any signage on the site be limited to a, a single monument sign not exceeding eight feet in height, as well as meeting the sign allowances in the C three district. And number ten, eleven, and twelve are all standard conditions that we have for planned districts. That basically says that the applicant is required to construct the project to the plans that you've approved, and that they have to do so within eighteen months of the plan being approved. So that, that would address all of the potential conditions of approval that we would have if you feel staff could work with the applicant on this point four to get the remaining correction items addressed. If you have any questions, staff would, would take them now.
Questions, staff?
Dustin, I guess one of the questions I've got, you said that they could utilize part of the one end down there for parking if they wanted to, I mean, if they, to take care of those extra parking spaces?
On the east end.
On the east end?
Yeah, so I've, I'll pull up the site plan here, and I think I actually have it up. So if...
I guess my biggest question on that, if they do utilize that area for parking, they've already got a six hundred feet, they're six hundred feet shy of their landscaping. Won't that add another?
Yeah.
Three hundred and some square feet of, to add to that?
Right. So you're, you're correct in your, your logic, in that the more paving area that we add for parking and driving, the more landscaping islands that we have to add as well. I haven't run those numbers and exactly what that quantity is, but you're correct. And so the reason that the applicant has requested to use some of the existing parking at Central Mall is one, Central Mall does have a significant amount of surplus, and they would, they would like to make sure that that surplus investment gets used because they've already made that investment at Central Mall, and, and then just to preserve additional green space for, for this site.
You had talked about an instrument to make that happen. Are you talking about some kind of a written agreement, a contract, so to speak, allowing that?
Right. So as, as an example, it's, it's not a complete apples-to-apples situation, but Elmore Center has a number of spaces that they lease with the Family Practice Medical Center to the north of them. And that particular site, which is old women's, not, I guess, W C?
Y W C.
Thank you. That building, the, it was, when it was repurposed as a medical clinic, they didn't have enough off-street parking. Elmore Center had surplus parking, and so they have a parking lot lease. The parking spaces are described geographically, and if you were to go out there, you'd see signage telling you where those signs are or where those parking spaces are, and the parking spaces themselves are also striped in a different color, so it's very obvious where you're supposed to park and where you're not. So this would be something similar where it wouldn't necessarily be a lease agreement because it's under the same ownership, but we would have an agreement nonetheless that would feature all those other elements to make sure that those parking spaces were truly allocated in perpetuity to the hotel.
So if it's under the same ownership, what would happen if the Central Mall would sell? Then they would also sell that parcel of land as part of it, being under the same ownership, or how, I mean, I guess?
The other, the other model that is used for that, when you have a, a center where the Kohl's development is, Buffalo Wild Wings has a shortage of parking actually, and Longhorn Steakhouse has a surplus of parking. So that is managed by one master developer, so they have what is referred to as reciprocal easement agreements. Those are recorded in the deeds office, and those just allow parking to be shared. The Central Mall may have some reciprocal easement agreements in place, but that, what you're speaking to is what staff tries to avoid and why those types of arrangements are usually recorded in the registered deeds office, because you wouldn't want to have someone buy this hotel site, tracks three, four, and five, and then not purchase any of the property to the north, and then all of a sudden, they have a track that is, doesn't have, has substandard parking. And so we agree that today, the mall owns both parcels, but we would still try to work with them to come up with an arrangement that gets recorded in the deeds office so that if there was ever an ownership transfer, that, that, that permission to park transfers with the property. And so usually, in the case of the lease with Elmore Center, there's a memorandum of the lease recorded in the deeds office that makes reference to that. In the case of the Buffalo Wild Wings and Longhorn Steakhouse, there's reciprocal easement agreements between the different users in that center. Those are recorded in the deeds office, so if there's ever a transfer of property, then there's a record of what parking goes to who. And so we would, if you're inclined to approve the offsite parking, we would just need to work with them to come up with an arrangement that ties those spaces to this parcel, and so they're, they don't, the ownership doesn't get And so, they're, they don't, the ownership doesn't get transferred without the spaces.
Has there been any discussion with the owner, that ownership group, to see if they're even agreeable to that?
Well, it was their plan, their idea to utilize existing spaces to the north, rather than have the cost of constructing additional spaces on the site. So, we will work with them. Once you decide that having the spaces off-site are okay, then we would work with them to come up with an arrangement that ties those spaces to this parcel.
Excuse me, I meant, has anybody discussed this with the Central Mall, to see if they're even willing, the ownership group, to see if they're willing to get rid, let those spaces go?
Well, that is Central Mall's idea.
Oh, it was, okay. I didn't understand.
It was Central Mall's idea to utilize the spaces, so they are aware of it, because they initiated the, they would, they would rather use spaces they've already built and paid for than build new spaces, which makes sense, as long as we can tie those spaces to this project.
So, I guess this is a question for the applicant, I mean, but do you, I mean, which way do you prefer that, I mean, would you, would you prefer having your parking spaces all together in case you ever did sell that property, that it would all go together? Or would you prefer, or you don't see a preference either way of having?
I think, and I'm speaking for the owner, and his representative, Steve Owens, is here also. We are in favor of this. We think it's smart and environmental-friendly to take advantage of existing parking there that has never been used in the past, rather than put new parking in, and we'd rather leave that as green space.
And pardon me, just your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the record, please. That's okay.
I thought you meant remembering from last time. Ken Beaverley, architect here in Salina.
Thank you.
My address is three fifty-six North Santa Fe.
Thank you, Ken. And is the applicant okay with utilizing those spaces directly north and west of that one driveway?
Yes.
As Dustin had mentioned. Okay, thanks very much. Any other questions of the applicant while we're here? Or staff? Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Let's say this, we use the seventeen spaces, and I understand they have to be marked exclusively for the hotel. So, one way to do that, I guess, is just put up signs, Hyatt Place, Parking Only. Okay, let's say you do that. How is that monitored? Policed, I guess? Who governs that?
Dean does that in his spare time.
It would be monitored by the mall.
The mall, okay.
Yeah, we have, we have to rely, like, as Dustin indicated, I mean, there's, it's, they came up with the idea, we thought it was pretty creative, the, what they did at Elmore Center, is that the spaces that belong to Elmore Center have yellow striping, and the spaces that belong to the clinic have blue striping.
Right.
And then they have signage. And so, we rely on that, and if there are complaints between the clinic and Elmore Center, since it's a private arrangement, they have to work those out.
Okay, thank you.
I think those are desirable spots for the mall, are they? The spots you're intending for the hotel aren't even really desirable spots to park at the mall anywhere.
Yeah, true.
Ken, have you had a chance to look at the twelve conditions that the staff has?
Talked with Dustin about them, and I might say that the owner is willing to work with the city on this. We agree with most of what they have. We have to get together and resolve some of the issues about the square footage, and I did my calculations using a computer, and I'm not sure what Dustin used, but we'll just have to get together and resolve that. That's no problem, we're willing to do that, so.
And the exterior materials shouldn't be an issue?
Yes, we're in the construction document phase, and that usually is left to the last, I mean, not necessarily for the plan development, but we will do that, we'll provide a material list very shortly.
And I don't know what the rest of the commission thinks, but looking at the twelve conditions, I really don't see any reason to have to postpone to a different time. I think that, you know, that the applicant can work with the city, work with the staff, and get these items taken care of without having to prolong the, you know, the system anymore that it already has been prolonged. So, that's the way I kind of see that. I don't know if anybody else has a different view on that or not.
Anybody else from the public here have a comment, or care to? And Dustin, is there anybody online?
There is, and while I wait to see if anybody would like to respond to that, I will mention that with those conditions of approval, one of them that staff would want some more clarity on is the materials of the building. The other items, we feel like are objective, either you do it or you don't, that we can figure out administratively. The exterior materials and design is more of a qualitative question, and whether or not it meets your satisfaction in terms of the quality of the materials and the appearance. So, I guess what I can do is I can pull up the rendering, and we can get an opinion of what the rendering looks like, because that's going to give you an idea of what the appearance will be, not knowing exactly what those materials are, but just at least the appearance and the colors. And then if we can get maybe some, at least ranges of materials that are being considered, to see if that's sufficient for you. For example, if they're using masonry, or whether it be brick or stone masonry on the first floor, with the other floors having a mixture of EFS and architectural metal horizontal siding, if that's sufficient description for you, then that would help us know what to review to, as far as the standard when it comes back to us for review.
Ken, can you give us an idea of what the minimum standards for Hyatt might be?
Our design is based on what the Hyatt standard are, standards are for the Hyatt Place. There are several of them, there's one in Wichita, there's one in Lawrence, one in Kansas City, and there may be one in Manhattan, but it'll be similar to that. And I promise you that the Hyatt people would not permit something that would be obnoxious or detrimental to the city or to the Central Mall. So, I can promise you that the design will be similar to what the rendering is. There may be some slight changes in the colors, but that should not change.
Could you give us just a rough idea of what we might be seeing there?
On the lower level, there's going to be some stones or masonry product of some sort. The others, the upper floors will be stucco, and then there'll be a sort of an architectural panel that would be visible on the right-hand side where the diagonal is.
Similar to what Fairfield is using out by Menards?
Similar to that, probably, yeah. I'm not involved in the design of the, I'm just responsible for the site plan. My brother, who is smarter than I am, is doing that, so, and he's in California, was in California, so. But he'll be back, and he'll help us submit the building schedule to the city, along with the rendering, and get an idea of what it's going to look like, so. But I promise you, it'll not be objectionable.
And as the commission, I kind of like jumping around here a little bit, but from a discussion standpoint, are we okay with letting staff and the applicant work out the materials to a reasonable standard?
I mean, I looked over the renderings that were in our packet, and they look very professional to me. And being familiar with the brand somewhat, I would expect those, that same level of material...
I agree.
To not affect that brand.
I've never seen a Hyatt Place that looked substandard.
Correct, correct. So, yes, to answer your question, yes.
Doug, are you okay?
Yes, you bet.
Okay, thank you. So, we were talking about online, do we have anybody online right now?
We do have a number of people online, however, none of them have chosen to speak on the topic.
Okay, we've heard from staff and the applicant, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
I think the biggest challenge that is going to be the landscaping plan, and trying to find the green space out there. But if the applicant is willing to work with staff to get that approved, I think this is a great project to continue moving forward with. That's my input on it, anyway.
Was that a motion?
I was looking to see if there was any more discussion before I proposed a motion. Mr. Chair, if there is no other discussion, I would, I would make a motion that we approve application number PDD eight-one dash four P with the twelve conditional items listed on page fourteen and page fifteen.
And also with instructions that staff work out the exterior materials and the parking arrangement with the applicant?
Yes.
Is that...
Yes.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Go forth.
We do not have any administrative items today that don't involve a public hearing. And we don't have any preliminary discussion items for you to discuss. In terms of unfinished or other business, we would just let you know that we do have an application scheduled for public hearing on the fifteenth, which is your next meeting. And we have a request that involves a proposal to convert the former Town and Country Veterinary Clinic that's on Shipple Drive, west of Ohio, to convert that to a, I guess our best description would be like a beauty salon condominium, where the space would be subdivided into individual units for multiple salon operators. And so, rather than having, say, a salon that's managed and owned by an individual, individual operators would be able to lease space within the condominium, so to speak, and operate with their own hours and their own, how they chose to do that. So, they would be providing the space, but the individual operators would choose their hours and all those things. So, it requires a change in zoning, and there will be a parking, a need for increased parking based on the number of salon stations. So, we have advertised a public hearing for that, and then we received applications, six different applications that were filed for your December sixth meeting.
Yay.
And so, previously, this commission had reviewed plans for some student housing at the southwest corner of Highland and Claflin for Kansas Wesleyan University. They didn't move forward with that particular plan, and now they have expanded that original plan to add more housing units with, which would be a phase plan, would be to create a student housing village, but this is essentially plans for Phase One of that village. And so, that would be scheduled for your hearing on the sixth. And then we have, you had previously reviewed preliminary plats for an expansion of the Stone Lake addition out at Schilling in Ohio, and finishing out the Magnolia Hills Estates addition along Holmes Road. And so, you approved preliminary plats for that, they've now come back with the final. So, that will also be on December sixth.
Sounds like a busy meeting.
We thought you were getting spoiled with having just one, one or two items at a time.
Anybody from the public want to comment on public forum?
The only other thing we bring to your attention is we attach to the packet at the request of Mr. Norland, a former planning commissioner. Every once in a while, if we have information that's interesting, food for thought, for planning commissioners to read, we just attach that to the packet, just because it's kind of an interesting article about commercial site plan review and things that go into that. And so, we've just provided that for you for your reading, if you want to have food for thought about how commercial redevelopment affects neighborhoods, so.
I can confirm that we don't have anyone online who wishes to speak at the public forum.
Thanks very much. Okay, I would entertain an open motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, under other business, I guess this would fall under. I don't know how many of you guys have received input on this, but there's been several citizens who have contacted me regarding the emergency fire exit situation with great life, with that development that is out there. And some of the citizens are quite concerned about the safety aspect of that. I don't know if staff can elaborate, or if it's something that we've already approved that we need to go back and look at again. I don't know exactly the process, I just wanted to bring this up and say, there is some citizen concern about safety for there being only one entrance in and out of there. And it seemed to balloon a few weeks ago, and it's kind of died down now, so I don't know exactly where it stands, but I guess the safety aspect is the biggest issue in that regard.
We gave an update on that a couple weeks ago. The status of what is known as River Run Estates Number Two, or River Run Estates Edition, which would be River Run Phase Two, is that this body recommended approval of a preliminary plat for that, and a, that preliminary plat contained eleven new building lots and an extension of Overlook Drive. And that item went to the city commission for consideration of the zoning change on first reading, subject to final plating of the property. That final plat has not been submitted yet. The city staff is working on a summary report, pulling information together, which will be sent out to the city commission this week, because they have had questions raised about that. So, we're going to provide the historical background information, the fire code requirements, the subdivision regulation requirements, what happened at what point in time, and provide all that to the city commission, so they know what options there are. But if they do file a final plat, and it will come back before this body, and if this body doesn't feel comfortable with it, you should deny it.
Thank you. Any other further discussion?
Sorry to hold you up.
Not a problem, we're still early. We're getting the commissioner all out of here by five o'clock. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.